Evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Temple City to order. Madam City Clerk, can we get the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here.
Motion excused, Councilmember Yu, for cause.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. There's no objections. Councilmember Yu is excused for cause. Next, tonight for the invocation, we are pleased to have a special guest, Pastor Andrew with Live Oak Community Church located at 9642 Live Oak Avenue. Pastor Andrew has been doing ministry in the San Gabriel Valley for 20 years. This March, is that right? He has ministered to youth, young adults, and families in Arcadia from 2004 to 2022. In October of 2022, he took on the role of pastor and the endeavor to re-envision Westminster Presbyterian Church of Temple City, now rebranded as Live Oak Community Church. The church will host its official public launch on Sunday, March 31st of this year, which is Easter Sunday. Festivities begin at 10:00 a.m. with brunch and an egg hunt for the children, followed by a worship service at 11:00 a.m. And Pastor Andrew is also married and a proud father of three children, ages five, two, and nine months. Wow. Congratulations.
You're a busy guy.
Yeah.
So, please rise for the invocation and remain standing afterwards for the pledge.
Creator God, thank you for the blessing of another day. I know the chance to experience life. Thank you for the breath in our lungs, the intellect and creativity of our minds, the community in which we dwell, all of which are part of your very creation. As to our community, Lord, thank you for the mayor, for council members, city leaders, and staff members who have answered the call to care for it, diligently seeking and implementing that which would amount to its welfare and success. Bless each and every one of these individuals. All wise God, grant them wisdom with which to contemplate, communicate, and conclude what would lead to that very welfare and success, even here and now in these moments ahead. Point them, Holy One, to all that is right and good, and grant them every insight needed to stave off the contrary. God of all blessings, I ultimately pray that you would have favor upon this community of ours, Temple City, that by your hand you would cause it to flourish and thrive in ways only you can, that we would behold that glorious blessing for your name's sake. Amen.
The pledge. Please face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, for ceremonial matters, tonight we have a presentation and a proclamation for American Red Cross Month. We are pleased to have tonight with us Diana Pineda Ramirez, Executive Director of San Gabriel and Pomona Valley Chapter, who is here tonight to receive the proclamation. And before we present this proclamation to Mr. Ramirez, I would like to read a portion of this proclamation. American Red Cross Month 2024. During this month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Temple City and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who notably dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through our humanitarian efforts to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a lifesaving difference in people's darkest hours. Whether it is delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now therefore, I, Mayor of Temple City, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the city of Temple City, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Temple City to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Mr. Ramirez, if you can come up, and we would like to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor. I'd love to. I'd like to start off by thanking everyone here. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you to the residents of Temple City. We have many volunteers from this very city. We are so ecstatic to continue our continued partnership and strengthen that as the years, as many, many more years to come, right? So, I'd like to extend an open invitation to everyone to donate blood to help save a life, to volunteer during a large-scale natural disaster, or during a local home and apartment fire, which we respond to 365 days a year. Come out and volunteer to our servicemen and women, our veterans, their families, and book a blood drive. We really appreciate everyone's involvement, commitment, dedication, and humanitarian service, and we are committed to the city. We love you, and we appreciate every single one of you. Thank you so much.
Are you guys, do you still have an office in Pomona?
Pomona and Arcadia.
Oh, in Arcadia also?
Yes, we do. Come down and visit us anytime you'd like.
Where in Arcadia is it?
It's right across the street from the Santa Anita racetrack.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Huntington Drive. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The council will now hear public comments for anyone who would wish to address the city council. This is the time. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comments and move on to the consent calendar. I do want to pull item E for a brief comment and discussion. Is there any other items the council would like to pull? Can we get a motion for the remaining items?
Motion to approve consent calendar other than item E.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Mann.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Just a brief comment on item E. I know this isn't the first time. We've done this before. I think in talking with our city manager, the last time we did it was 2020. Is that correct? So, I just wanted to see if, Mr. Cook, if you could share with us sort of like the plan moving forward as a city. My main concern is just that we aren't getting a dollar-to-dollar exchange for these funds. And I think as a city, we could maybe think about what we can do the next go-around, next cycle, so that we can perhaps think of better ways to use Prop A, if possible. So, if you could share a little bit about the plan.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. As part of the budget process for fiscal year 2425, we will be doing a very thorough analysis of other projects that we can use with the remaining Prop A funds, both the surplus that we have on an annual basis and the remaining fund balance. What this action will do today will give us a little bit of breathing room over the next three fiscal years. And Prop A is a very limited funding source in terms of what types of eligible activities and projects. It is primarily and almost exclusively program-based rather than capital-based, where your other funding sources like Measure M, R, and Prop C can be used for infrastructure projects. In this case, Prop A can only be used for bus benches and bus shelters. So, that's part of the constraint that we have. The other thing we'll take a look at as well is seeing what other programs we can either adjust or tweak, but that would be for the council's consideration during the budget process as well. So, we will go through that exercise between now and the budget process and come to you with a more thorough discussion than we usually do with the use of Prop A funds.
Mayor.
Yes. Brian, I mean, just because I sit on that board and we look over the financials, I mean, we're not, there's many cities that do that. Why is it that so many are having difficult times trying to use those funding?
That's a good question, Councilmember Sternquist, and primarily because of the limited scope of what you can do with those funds. Some cities have the ability to have a fixed route service that is, that fits what that community's needs, transportation and transit needs are. It's real, and there are many cities throughout LA County who go through these exchanges with, in this case, we have a nexus between the service that Foothill Transit provides, but some cities will do exchanges with cities that are even adjacent to them. So, it is not unusual for that. But it's really comes down, and we'll have a thorough discussion with you, but it really come, the, the main point is that it really comes down to the fact that there is a very limited scope of use of those funds in comparison to the other subvention funds, essentially the sales tax everybody pays for Measure R, Measure M, Prop C, that has a lot more flexibility in that process. So, we'll, but again, to the mayor's point, and I've heard that loud and clear from other council members, we need to just make sure we're doing all of our due diligence in terms of looking at all the available process, all the available activities and projects that we can do with that, and we'll go through that exercise and present that to you during the budget process.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I agree with Councilmembers Sternquist, and from the standpoint that it seemed, we're not the only city that's doing this. And you would think that, I mean, is it something we can do, is for, talk to our legislators about this? I mean, obviously, they hold the key to changing the rules maybe a little bit and recognize that, you know, there's a better way of doing things rather than having cities just keep selling these monies to other organizations. I mean, or maybe widen what the options can be that we can use. I mean, but of course, we can't make that decision. They have to.
That's, it's statutory, it's statutory within the language of Prop C when Prop C was passed, I think in the 1980s or so.
Are you aware, has that even come up in the legislature that, I mean, Greg, have you heard anything about this?
I think one of the problems is that it was a voter-approved initiative as a proposition, so the legislature itself couldn't really do much. It would have to come back to the voters to modify what the scope would be, and when it was presented to the voters, the idea was to have direct funding for transit. And so, pulling it off of transit to make it more available for other types of transportation-related issues, it could very well wind up with a no vote because transit advocates would be pushing against any change. So, this is, this is a tough one, but as, as you all have said, cities, unless you are a city large enough to run a fixed route service, these kinds of transfers or, you know, 75 cents on the dollar, 70 cents on the dollar, 80 cents on the dollar, once every three or four years are becoming very common in city after city.
We do have somewhat of a fixed transit in our dial-arrive. Would that qualify as a fixed transit?
Yeah, we, so our dial-arrive, that's.
That would be something we could look at to perhaps.
See if that can be expanded, how far, and get a sense of how that service is doing, one which we, we've usually gone through an annual review of that, but just see what else could be done with that service.
And when talking with, when I was speaking with Brian about this issue, and you remember when we were on Parks and Rec, which is, that's who oversees that program, they would always do a survey every year to find out from the writers what they like, what they don't like, and I don't think they've done that for a while.
No.
And maybe it's something that we need to maybe get on and say, okay, let's talk to our writers, those who are using it, or those who aren't using it for whatever reason. And I remember distinctly, we did change it, we did expand it, because people would come to and say, well, we don't use it because it doesn't go X, Y, and Z. Well, okay, let's change that, and let's do that. So, maybe it's time to relook at that whole thing and get those surveys, or at least talk to the writers or anybody else.
And I think also, another way to look at it is that the money that, what's the difference? $175,000, Brian, what was it, that the change comes to?
About a quarter, 250.
Okay. So, 250,000. You can't just arbitrarily, you know, sell them to anybody. It's got to be transit.
Right.
And I think one of the arguments that can be made on the transit side is that Foothill Transit is a regional body that services the San Gabriel Valley. So, they put those monies back into capital projects such as building, what do you call them, the structures that house the cars, like the?
Like the bus depots?
Like something, like a depot, or, or, that's one idea. Other ideas is they look at the possibility of increasing service areas in the, in the city. We only have, Foothill is on Santa Anita, I believe. So, they, if there was a need and the buy-in was there from Metro also, they could establish more routes in the city. I mean, that is a process, but they use those monies to help all the cities regionally that are part of that JPA.
And that's why I didn't have a, you know, big amount of heartburn with this, because Foothill Transit does service our Temple City residents. So, it, hopefully, this will help them to do more service or better service.
And they have a bus shelter program that we can apply for, I think, but it's only obviously on Santa Anita where they would be able to put one in.
That's what I was going to say. Isn't it a very limited area that Foothill Transit hits in Temple City?
Yes.
Down Santa Anita?
But that's a busy, busy.
It is a busy thoroughfare.
Yeah, thoroughfare.
Because, because I mean, from a, from a service standpoint, right? I mean, it would be Metro, Metro routes would be the predominant service provider.
It is now.
It is now, right? So, I'm not saying we shouldn't sell it to Foothill Transit and sell it to Metro. I don't even know if Metro does this, right?
Have we ever sold to Metro?
No.
I don't know. I'm not aware of an agency selling to Metro.
Yeah. So, so that, I mean, yeah, maybe we are limited in our options, but it's, I think, to your, to your point.
To explore it and see what the possibilities are. I just, you know, I, I think once, I mean, that was my first question. I didn't even know that that was done, the first time we did it, but serving on the board, it came up in a, how many cities do this? And about seven cities, you know, raised their hand and said, oh, yeah, that's a good thing to do because you get that money into your general fund, especially if you're not going to be using it. So, that's what I was just curious, is why, what's the issue? Why, why are so, I mean, to me, six cities out of 26 is a lot of cities that are.
My concern is, at some point, the legislature might wise up and think, well, why are we giving Temple City this money? They're not using it. Let's just give it to somebody else.
They haven't done that.
I know, but I mean.
I'm just afraid if you make too much of an issue, it might go away altogether. So, it's probably, you know, good to explore it, but I mean, the, the difference that we get, 800, what is it, 850,000? No, 800, 750. 750,000 is a lot better than zero.
Oh, yeah. There's no question of that.
So, I just think we need to be mindful of sometimes how Sacramento works.
Or doesn't work.
Or doesn't work.
Well, thank, thank you for the comments and discussion. Councilmember Viscara, do you have anything?
Nothing further.
Okay. All right. Can we get a motion for that item?
Motion to approve item E on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Mann.
Yes. All right. Next, public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we also have none. We move to new business, item 10A, fiscal year 2023, 2024, mid-year financial review, treasurer's report, revenue expenditure, and capital project summary reports, and budget amendments. So, city manager Cook, start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council, notwithstanding the action that the council just took. We have some good news as we get to the mid-part, a little bit past the mid-part of the fiscal year for 2324. We are seeing an increased surplus due to some factors that our administrative services director, city treasurer, will go over, including some improvements in the investment portfolio and some increased taxes as well. One other item that we will touch upon briefly tonight, but we'll come back to the council in mid-April, is the use of ARPA funds. We've gone out to bid on several of our projects recently, and due to the good work of our partners with TransTech, we are meeting or going below the engineer's estimate on some of the projects. So, we are going to propose coming to the council in April with a accounting way of dealing with the ARPA funds so that those funds do not get lost and they're fully expended, but they are accounted for in a way, and we'll talk about that a little, we'll just briefly go over it tonight, but we'll be coming back to you in April with that as well. Also, too, need to thank staff as well. They do a great job of caring for and really take their fiduciary responsibility very seriously in what you give them and what you grant to us as resources to spend on all the projects and services that the community provides. One other note that I will tell you is that today I was at a meeting for the liability trust fund. The liability costs will be going up slightly, and tomorrow I will be at a sheriff's meeting with Sheriff Luna and the command staff, where they will let us know the increase in our rates as well. We've, again, conservatively always put in about a 6% increase collectively between liability and city costs for our sheriff's contract, but that is one of the challenges that we see going forward, along with just regular challenges of, of what inflation has done, even though inflation has come down significantly in the last 12 months, just that cumulative effect of what inflation has done over the last few years. So, again, kudos to Susan and the entire city staff for being cognizant of making sure that we are not spending those precious city dollars and taxpayer dollars that you allocate to us to provide those services. So, with that, Mayor, if that's okay, I'll turn it over to Susan. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. Can't believe it's been three months already, so we're here at the mid-year financial review. So, tonight, recommended actions for council is to receive the fiscal year 2324 mid-year financial review and related reports, and as well as approving the proposed budget amendments. So, tonight, we'll be going over, as usual, the analysis of the various general fund types, revenues, expenditures, the fund balance, will end with a conclusion and the outlook. So, with the analysis, and as always, I do a summary overview real quick of the general fund, and we're proposing higher, or we have higher estimates in our vehicle license fees as well as the interest income that we earn. The expenditure for the general fund is on target. The non-general fund, most of them are on target, and as the city manager discussed, we will be talking about the ARPA funds later in the presentation. So, the budget amendments only consist of revenue adjustments for the general fund. It's a total of almost $553,000. As I mentioned, the VLF funds, the HDL projections show that we're going to be about almost $53,000 higher by year-end, or fiscal year-end. And then, our interest income is also, I'm proposing a $500,000 increase. To this date, we are already, we've met the current budget, and we were actually short of one quarter's worth of LEAF, so the $500,000 should cover the full year's interest income.
Susan, why are the interests up so much? Is that something happened in the market?
Well, with the inflationary, with the feds trying to control the inflation, and they were increasing the rates, the interest rates for income investments also go up. When they held the interest rates lower, of course, we were earning a lot less. We still have investment, investments are earning half a percent that will be maturing in a year, so when that gets reinvested, right now, LEAF's interest today is 4.2. In December of '31, this mid-year report, it was 3.96%. So, it's just increasing, but I feel from what I've read, it's going to stabilize, but our investments that are maturing that are less than 1% will be reinvested in the higher percent interest income. So, we'll, we'll see the higher revenues this year. So, if those amendments are approved, our estimated operating surplus would be $1.4 million. However, when we apply our one-time expenditures that were approved, it goes down to about 790, almost $792,000. And then, our estimated year-end fund balance on June 30th of 2024 is $27.16 million. The pie chart, as usual, again, most of our income or revenues come from taxes, which includes the intergovernmental revenues, so that becomes about $13.6 million in total out of the $18.4 or $18.5 million in total for general fund. Next one, our expenditures. Again, as usual, you see the biggest pie is, the biggest slice is the public safety, but again, that's usual for a lot of cities, although our expense at 37% is very good. As I mentioned before, usually, cities are at 50, even 60% of their general fund budget. Next one is our fund balance for general fund. It's just summarizing what I discussed earlier. You can see our current budget with the addition of the proposed adjustments. We're looking at the $18.5 million revenue budget. We've taken the operating expenditures, and we're looking at $1.4 million for surplus, and of course, all our one-time expenditures, including capital improvement project of the maintenance of effort that we have to match of $210,000. Our estimated total surplus is $791,935. And again, at the end of June 30th, end of the fiscal year, we're looking at $27.16 million. Our audited balance came in at $26.3637 million, so when we add our estimated surplus, we're looking at the largest fund balance we've had since, from the records I can find, it was since 2010.
Yeah, I'm assuming that the 750 that we spoke about tonight is not included in the.
It's not included in there.
Okay, but that'll show up in the next?
Yes. So, that'll be, get our almost $28 million.
Yeah.
So, as I mentioned before, we'll, we'll be discussing the ARPA fund. These are the projects council has approved in the previous years. It leaves us with an unallocated balance of almost $1.7 million. As you, as you recall, we received $8,566,000 worth of ARPA allocation, or they call it SLF RF, state and local, what is it, fiscal revenue fund, I believe, really fund. So, as we've mentioned before, the deadlines, we have to commit those funds as far with agreements and contracts by the end of this year, and those have to be fully paid in two years, two years later. So, our discussion for the next April meeting that was mentioned by the city managers, again, the engineer's estimates are below the budget, and what would happen then is we would have to return the unused allocation to the federal U.S. Treasury. So, on the, we're looking at the second meeting of April, we're looking to discuss eligible charges for ARPA for government services, such as, we can use the public safety costs, such as the sheriff's contract or expenses.
Yeah, but we've never done that in the past, but I mean, so you can, we can pay part of our sheriff's budget with ARPA.
Yes. Any government services, we can pay with that.
And what that would do is essentially, from an accounting standpoint, you would essentially account for those costs that you've incurred, and it's eligible under ARPA, then you would reserve it, so we would have it in general fund reserve. So, you would still be going through the same project process that you've had before because you still, we still have to meet the expenditure deadline of December 31st, 2026. That doesn't go away. The rules of. go away. The rules of how, and then the manner in which it must be expended, still in play. What this does is it preserves that total of eight point, a little over $8 million to make sure if, say, a project comes in under budget, that we are not stuck running quickly at the end of this year to say, we need to scramble in $500,000 worth of projects. This makes sure that we have the time and the, and we have the time in order to expend any excess funds, which, again, you still have an unallocated amount, but you have some more time to identify some projects and also get those projects done. So, when we get to mid, I would say, the midpart of 2025 next year, then we'll have gone through the process saying, here's how much we've expended, here's how much, here's all the projects that have been done, and if there's any other residual amount of leftover ARPA funds to do, then the council can deliberate, not feel rushed in order to expend those funds.
So, let me just make sure I understand that clearly. So, what you're recommending we do is that unallocated balance of $1.67 million will be preserved in the event there are cost overruns for any of the existing capital projects?
That's one scenario, and that could play out for some of those projects, or the other side of the coin would be also if some of those projects came in under budget as well.
Oh, and then you can actually take the difference and put it back into the unallocated?
Exactly. And then you can, and then we're not, then you're not rushed at the end of, say, the last quarter of this year, rushing to say, how are we going to spend that savings or that $400,000, whatever's left over?
Okay, well, that's good to know, but I guess I'll also point out that, and I think Director Paragis, you also point out, we still have to expend the money by 2026. So, if there's any other projects that we're trying to get going, we still need to make that decision sooner than later.
Absolutely.
Right, we have to get it going by December of this year, commit it. So, what we'd like to propose, well, just a brief summary, is to basically transfer between the ARPA fund and general fund, so that the government services costs would be transferred to ARPA, and then the projects you have approved would transfer to general fund, and we preserve those amounts, so that we're not restricted by the December 26th or 27th.
And we don't lose it.
Correct. That's the important part, is that we expand and encumber all, 100% of that $8.56 million. And not have, not, my goal is not to return anything to them. So, when we discuss it further and in more in detail in April, we'll come back with you to basically have the presentation of how it's going to be done.
What's the process for identifying those projects?
You've gone through the process in a couple, with at least one budget process last year, and we had a remaining amount. So, and I think, too, a few of these, like, for example, the Pickable Courts, kind of came up midstream in terms of the process as well. So, and the Trellis project because of the issues that we were having structurally with the Trellis at City Hall. So, I think several of these were during the budget process, and some of them have just come out throughout the year. So, this gives you, and again, I use the word breathing room for proper, this gives us a little bit more breathing room in terms of not feeling the pinch of having that committed, because committed really means contracts in place and everything else. And for a good portion of these projects, we will have those in place. But, again, because of what we're seeing from the bids that are coming in and some of the challenges, it's just, this is the safest way in order to preserve those funds going forward.
And that gives you time to identify new stuff there?
Yeah, and we, there are still some outstanding items. Some of the ad-hocks are looking at as well, so that gives you, as the council, some flexibility, and you're not pressed against the timeframe, and you're not pressed against the wall to say, okay, I need to make a decision in two months about how we're going to spend whatever X amount of money.
Any more questions on ARPA? So, conclusion-wise, again, our estimated revenues are increasing, and although our expenditures are on track, the surplus, again, is almost $792,000, and we estimate the fund balance to be at $27.16 million at the end of the fiscal year. Non-general fund revenues are, and expenditures are on track, and then we'll further discuss the use of the ARPA funds at the April, I believe, second meeting in April. And then the outlooks, briefly, again, as you know, reinvestments will be reinvested at higher interest rates, so meaning higher interest income. The five-year projection from HDL consultants, we're looking at an average of a 4% projected average annual increase for property taxes and 3% for sales tax revenues. And then, we've already commenced the budget process for fiscal 24-25. We started, the departments got their packets on February 20th, and we're looking to come back to council for a study session on May 28th with an adoption of the proposed budget and master fees and fines schedule on June 18th. So, tonight, we recommend that the council receive the fiscal year 23-24 mid-year financial review and related reports and approve the proposed budget amendments. Make a recommendation, recommendation?
Hold on, we need to open the public comment.
I was going to say, yeah.
Is that the end of your presentation? Okay, thank you. So, well, first, if there's any council questions for Director Paragis, Councilmember Skar, Councilmember Sternquist, Mayor Potem Chavez. Okay, then let's open up the public comment for this item. Does anyone wish to address the council on item 10A? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We'll move on to final council questions or comments. Councilmember Viscara?
None at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Sternquist?
I just want to say that it's like a child bringing home a great report card, and being the parent and looking at it and saying, oh, my gosh, you're doing everything that's right. So, thank you for that.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
But then some parents will say, keep doing better.
I don't know.
I agree. I mean, it's good news, obviously, and, you know, kudos to staff and all the hard work, as Brian mentioned earlier. And the outlook, for me, looks bright as well. So, it's not something that this is a one-shot deal. We're obviously in the right direction, and we'll hopefully keep doing it that way. So, thank you.
You know, it's, I'm just thinking out loud, but when we go through something like this, it's like the outside world of Temple City has no idea that this is happening. It's, well, I guess, that's why it falls on us to follow through with it. But somehow, I wish it was out there, that people overall had an idea of what we're actually doing here and the effort that goes into it.
Sounds like, sounds like a post for social media.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Skar. I, too, agree with my fellow council members, Director Paragis, you and your staff, and of course, our entire city team are definitely on point when it comes to all of our fiscal, financial-related matters. And it's great to see when everyone's in alignment with council policy, and this is, this is a testament to that. So, thank you for that, and we certainly look forward to a very busy year in terms of projects and investments back into our community. So, this is very exciting. Thank you. All right, can we have a motion for this item? Did you want to do a motion?
Make a motion to receive the fiscal year 23-24 mid-year financial review and related reports and approve proposed budget amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no objections. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. All right, next, we move on to an update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. First, I just want to thank city staff. The last two weeks of events and activity in the city has been really intense. Thank you to our partners in the LA County Sheriff's Department. Thank you to Mr. Jim Bazian and Temple City Photos and others who, we just, we had a jam-packed two weeks. And I was a little taxing at times, but staff does a great job and a lot of teamwork. So, I really appreciate that. So, thank you. This Saturday, we will be having a small groundbreaking at 10:00 a.m. at Temple City Park for the first playground, for one of the first two playgrounds. We're going to have two groundbreakings, one later this summer. Bids had come in for both TC Park and our road projects, and as we noted in the mid-year budget update, those bids are coming in slightly under engineer's estimates. So, thank you to our partners at TransTech, but also, too, it's a good thing for things to come in under budget, but when we're dealing with the funding sources that we're talking about, it can be a little challenging. So, we'll work, we'll work through those challenges and deliver some great projects to the community over the next few months. And lastly, as I noted earlier today, earlier this evening, excuse me, I will be attending tomorrow's sheriff's, city manager educational seminar, where we will get the numbers related to the cost increases that will be passed on from the sheriff's department. Sheriff Luna was here on Friday, which was interesting to hear from his perspective on some of the challenges, and I'll leave it to the council to report back on that.
Is that a discussion, or is that just, okay, this is what you're getting?
It, I wouldn't describe it as a discussion. It's, very briefly, what it is, is that the county auditor controller goes through a process of identifying the direct costs that are incurred by the sheriff's department and delivering services to all the 42 contract cities. On top of that, we go through a process with the liability trust fund of assessing, and we just received the actual report last week regarding the liability cost to all the contract cities.
And my understanding is that is way up?
It is, yes, it is, it is up. We are just, the board, which I'm a part of, just passed a half percent increase in the liability surcharge. It could be larger, no different than if you keep, for, we're very fortunate as a city to have the fund balances that we just described in the mid-year budget process. But in some cases, some cities set minimum thresholds for the amount of fund balance that they would need to have, with the, without going into too much detail and not to bore too, not to make this too boring, but with the liability trust fund, we are on a pretty thin margin of how much resources and reserves we have in order to pay the claims that funnel through to the 42 contract cities that contract out with the LA County Sheriff's Department. It is a challenging time with that issue. So, we're working with it. I'm part of a group of nine other city managers that are working with it countywide to see if we can come to some level of agreement on a five, on a new five-year agreement, a new five-year service agreement with the sheriff.
In that discussion, is there anything coming from the sheriffs regarding whether it's best practices or changes that could reduce this cost in the future? I mean, I'm not expecting things to come down, but seems like things related to like the liability trust fund is kind of tied to some of these so-called best practices, or I don't know what else to call it.
That's a great, that's a great question and a great point, Mayor Mann, and part of the answer to that is yes, and we're looking towards Sheriff Luna and his leadership and his command staff to start to articulate that, rather than in broad strokes, really start to articulate that more in some policies and practices. Again, as part of, and this is part of the reason I'm part of the trust fund, and thank you for allowing me to be on it, so I can have an understanding of what the sheriff's department is doing. And there is some changes that they've had in their risk management bureau. Most recently, I met the new lieutenant. She seems very enthusiastic about her, understands that her role and responsibility is very important, not just to the county as a whole, but to all 42 contract cities. So, hopeful that some adjustments that the sheriff's department has made over the last six months, including the new lieutenant over risk management, is going to be helpful in that practice. So, looking forward to seeing some more concrete measures and practices that we'll be seeing from the sheriff's department going forward.
And just so I'm sure they remember, part of that process is, we have staff from JPI that is involved in that quite heavily.
Yeah, they're essential, both Alex Smith, the executive director of CJP, and the director of liability program is Paul Zaglavich. I think many of you have met before, were seen at conferences before, are hand-in-hand with us in that process, and they're invaluable in terms of subject matter experts to help us work through those issues and have those productive discussions and sometimes disputes at times with the county as well. So, that's it for me, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next is update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly tonight, for obvious reasons, dealing with yesterday, legislation has not been fast-tracked right now, so I don't have much of a legislative update, although we're hoping late April and May we'll start to get a better idea of where the legislature is going on city-based bills and begin to update you so we can all start thinking about those. The League of California Cities, within the past nine days, joined the Association of California Counties and did a joint brief to the U.S. Supreme Court on the Grants Pass case. You'll remember, this is the case that is kind of the follow-up to the Boise case on homeless status, camping in parks, and basically how cities can work with homeless individuals in terms of protecting quality of life issues for other individuals, for the community as a whole, while not violating the rights of the individuals who are homeless at the time. That hearing is due to be in April, and after the hearing, we should have another update based on the questions the Supreme Court asks. They usually tend to tip their hat as to which way they're going to go. So, I do plan on having more legislative updates and hopefully a litigation update or two in April and in May. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we go to council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? All right, next, we go to council items separate from the regular agenda, starting with Councilmember Sternquist.
Let's see. You know, I did have a question for Greg regarding if there's any movement with the League on rent control. I believe there's going to be an initiative on the ballot in November. And then, I also heard recently that, I guess, right now landlords are only required to provide heat for their tenants. You don't have to provide air conditioning. But their, LA County, I believe, they're looking at implementing something that says landlords now have to require, that tenants are asking their landlords that they are, you know, need to, I'm just mumbling, that they need to provide air conditioning also as part of the contract when they move in.
Who's saying that?
I saw, it was on the news. They were talking about the rent control initiative. It's going to be on the ballot in November. And I did see people having signatures outside of Home Depot for that. They were asking if you would sign for rent control, and then...
So, they were, you were in favor of air conditioning or not in favor?
Not the people at Home Depot. They were just regarding, wanted your signature on rent control. But that same week, I saw something on the news, and they were talking to landlords in LA County, and they were saying, well, if I have to require, if you're going to require air conditioning, then I'm going to have to raise the rent. So, they were talking about how the state is asking for more, you know, for lower rents, more affordable housing, but yet they put restrictions on landlords, such as now requiring air conditioning, which causes the rents to go up even higher.
Yeah, that's just not going to work.
So, I was wondering if there's anything, or if you've heard anything from the League on housing? Is it?
Not on those items. I can take a look, and if I find anything this week or early next week, I can email the council and brief you all on that. Those tend to be things, if LA County is acting, it would either have to be only enforced in the unincorporated area... in the unincorporated areas, or enforced everywhere through, I would imagine, the public health department, through saying that it's required because it's a matter of cooling. So, let me take a look and see what I can find, and as I say, I'll email the council with whatever I find. I don't tend to have those on the top of my mind unless it's very clear that there's something that city staff is gonna have to change in the way that we operate here. But I'll go take a look and let you all know.
Yeah, and I think the argument from the people who are in favor of the air conditioning is that California keeps getting hotter and hotter and hotter, and it's just becoming unbearable for people to live without air conditioning. So, I think that's where it's coming from. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Well, everything with the Hulang group that came in was great.
Cheers.
And you did an excellent job, I'd say. Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, and I really enjoyed it, and I think that the activities were highly successful, too. Do we have any idea of what kind of money they made or anything like that?
I think Camellia Festival, I think they're still tallying, I think they know, but it's... It was a profitable year for them, so they'll be able to distribute some funds out to the local nonprofits. But it was one of their most successful Saturdays, I believe.
Speaking for the Kiwanis, we made over $2,000 selling cotton candy.
No way.
Can you believe that?
Do you have a pancake breakfast this year, huh?
How, what do you usually average?
Twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, something like that. But they were, I worked for about eight hours, and it was non-stop. You know, the people were just, I don't know what the attraction is, I can't stand the stuff.
Who eats cotton candy?
I do.
Just kids?
Little kids primarily.
Yeah, my kids.
And some people like...
I love it.
It's gotta be great for your teeth, huh?
Pure sugar.
It's more air, sweet air. And yeah, so that's all I have.
Surprisingly low in calories, though. It really is.
It probably is, all air.
I like the justification for the cotton candy. Mayor Pro Tem challenge?
Thank you, just a couple of items. I was gonna bring up the fact on this Camellia Festival. I can't remember in the past, do we ever get a wrap-up report from them? And can we, maybe, just to address some of the questions? It'd be nice to know, well, how we did, what was good, what was maybe bad, because since we are a partner with them, it'd be nice to kind of get a wrap-up kind of report. Maybe you could talk to...
I can talk to Ms. Karen.
...Dawn or somebody about that.
Sure.
See if that would be something they could put together.
Did the beer garden ever open?
It did, but it had late hours. It didn't open till like five o'clock in the afternoon, or something like that, I think, or...
It was a little bit later.
Yeah.
It always has been.
Yeah, I don't know how well it did, but it would be nice to see some of those numbers. I mean, it's not, you know, a secret or anything, so. One of the things we renewed tonight was the farmer's market contract. When's the last time we got an update from them?
It's been quite a while as well.
Can we get one of those?
Sure.
Because I know they've had challenges, and I, for one, would like to know what those challenges are to see maybe if there's something we can do as a city to...
Help them.
...help them, or maybe throw some more life into it, maybe perhaps. Do you still go there? You used to go there pretty regularly.
Periodically, well, I had to. My daughter was the one that got me to bring it to the council.
Okay, yeah, so you should go.
To have a farmer's market.
Are we still charging? Are we still getting funds?
Yeah, per the contract, we, it's after, it's after their fees. It's a deduction after several of their expenses that they incur, so, but yes, as part of that, we do receive quarterly proceeds.
But we're not making huge amounts.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not even really a recovery of the cost, per se.
It's more of a service to the community.
It's more of a service to the community, so it's not, for lack of a better term, it's not a money-making venture for us.
Pickleball courts?
Installation started this week, sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, I went by the park, I stopped by the park, I think it was last night, and it looked like they had some posts set up.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that as part of my city manager's report, yes, this week, but unfortunately, with the rain today, there's probably a small delay, so that may push back for several days the rest of the installation.
But they are starting.
But they started this week.
What's there to install? It's just some lines on the...
No, the nets and the posts.
Nets and...
Nets aren't the same as they are for...
No, they're smaller.
No, they're smaller, and the way they have to be configured as well.
So, I remember one of my concerns when we were talking about pickleball courts was the proximity to the baseball field. I talked with the people at the ballpark, and they were fine. They, as far as the noise and things like that, there were really no complaints.
No, it seems to be a pretty ideal location.
And then, truthfully, as we go on with the season, since they're not gonna be able to be playing there late at night, it's not gonna be... One of the things that I did think about, though, is that where those pickleball courts are located, there's an awful lot of foul balls that go into that court, and I'm wondering if maybe Adam or should look to put up maybe some type of higher netting on that side or something. I'd hate to have someone get hit in the head with a baseball, because it would hurt, because they're going quite a way, a distance, and there are a lot of them that go where... Usually isn't a problem, because there's nobody playing tennis over there. But now, since it's dedicated to the pickleball, and it seems to be gonna be well-used, that would be my, one of my concerns, is that, you know, these baseballs flying into the, into that court. And it is primarily just that court, because that's where the foul balls end up.
Is that in the right field part?
No, it's in, no, they come over the backstop, and they go over the first base side, but that's where the tennis courts are. And baseball and softball seasons are here. They've already begun, it's hard to believe. Softball, ASA, they're a little struggling right now. They have a few teams, but they're holding steady. Baseball, both baseball leagues are doing well. So, yeah, so it's a good thing. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but at Lido Park, and they probably, probably didn't go through the city on this, but I noticed they've made some improvements. They have a new, they have a new backstop on the ball field, and I think they paid for it.
They did.
Yeah. Do they have to get our permission to do that?
They, we, we supervise, we help supervise that.
Oh, okay, good, good. And I think they did something, they were telling me leveled the field or something like that, too, and put up a new mound, and so they're...
They're good partners.
Yeah, they seem to be doing themselves. And Mayor's last full meeting, so it's hard to believe a year is gonna fly out.
I know.
Fernando's.
It flew by.
Fernando's, too, yeah, this is your last real meeting, so.
I was gonna wait till you're finished.
We, well, say all our speeches next time, say those.
Well, let me interrupt. I would just, you know, when we do the reorg, that's gonna be a different thing, but since it's just us check-ins here, I'd like to thank all of you...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
...for inviting me to come back on the council these past... Brian keeps telling me it's four years.
Almost four years.
Yeah.
He said it was, right?
It just zoomed by like that. It was amazing. So, I thank each of you, and I really enjoy it, and I really respect you.
So, it's been four years, but how many years have you aged?
Oh, God. So, that's all I have to say.
Well, you've done a great job, and we're, of course, we'll have those words next meeting, but we're gonna miss you, I think.
And I'll miss you.
But we'll still see you around. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, anything else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so like our city manager mentioned, it was a whirlwind week. I don't remember the last time I had this many things to do and places to go, ever. So, it was fun, as I tell staff, especially Liz, who's been... A big shout-out to Liz Ortiz and Eliana Flores for keeping me sane and organized, because I literally was losing track of the days and where I needed to be, so they were a lifesaver. Just quickly on what Brian mentioned earlier, the state of public safety with Sheriff Luna was very successful, so I want to thank the Temple City Chamber of Commerce for really pulling their weight on that. It was a packed house, they sold out all the seats. The sheriff took a more of a broad overview of the state of public safety. He didn't focus solely on Temple City, and understandably, the audience consisted of members of the public from other parts of the Sangiovese Valley, not just Temple City.
Were there a lot of Temple City people there?
There were a good chunk, I would say, maybe thirty percent or so, yeah. But we had representatives from other law enforcement agencies, like I know Azusa, San Gabriel was there. So, there was a pretty wide, broad spectrum of folks represented.
William, I just, before I forget, I just want to interject that I forgot to congratulate you on a great state of our city.
It seems like a long time ago now, doesn't it?
Oh, my gosh. But it's, yeah, thank you for that, and you've represented all of us very well. It was very enjoyable, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And so, going back to the sheriff, he did, I think for me, the two big takeaways was he addressed the retail theft trends that have been sort of at the forefront of so many people's minds, and trying to use numbers and data to kind of paint a more realistic picture of what they're seeing at a broad scale.
Has it slowed down since Christmas, the holidays, or...
So, he's, I guess what he was trying to say is that the perception on social media makes it seem like it's out of control, but the numbers that they have show that it has increased, but not as much as what most people think, think has. But he's looking at it from a regional level.
Well, it was primarily the political ads that were driving that thing. I mean, every time you turned it on, somebody was breaking into something.
Yeah.
But that was more the DA's race than anything else, so.
Yeah, so he was very careful and diplomatic about trying to not talk about that particular race directly and really focusing on the sheriff's role.
He has to work with these people who are...
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's the attitude he should have.
And I think the same thing we face is there's sometimes a misunderstanding of what our deputies and the sheriff's role is versus the district attorney and the judicial system, how those two are connected and how they function. And so, you have these kind of, I would call myths, I think that's what the sheriff was alluding to, that deputies won't take reports or won't take things down because it's not gonna get prosecuted or whatnot, and he's saying that's just not, not true. And if we really were experiencing that, he says, you gotta let him know, because that means they're not doing their job. So, I think he was trying to kind of tie reality, kind of bring everyone back down to reality of what he's, what he and his team is seeing. And he also addressed the difficulty in hiring and mentioned that hiring a law enforcement has just been a challenge nationwide. It's not just the sheriffs, it's everywhere, and we know that for a fact. Like, even Captain Mesa talks about how he might lose a deputy, because there could be other cities or agencies that would have a hiring bonus and poach them from the sheriffs. They're having trouble graduating enough graduates from the academy to fill in the vacancies that they do have, so it's a wide...
Didn't he say he had like two hundred vacancies?
He said he had over, I think it was twelve hundred, yeah, at least county-wide, which is a staggering number, if you think about it. So, it's good to hear from him, because he seems like he at least is in touch with the fact that you don't want to burn out the group that you already have. I mean, mandatory OTs or whatnot, I mean, this is, this is a real thing that they're facing, so I think the more, it was nice to hear that, and hopefully anyone who was in attendance kind of at least got that side of the story, so that it's not, we're always jumping to conclusions that it's another reason or another factor.
Did they have any, did he have any ideas as to how they can approach solving that problem, hiring bonuses, a better medical, you know?
He actually mentioned the bonuses thing, but he didn't go into detail about how that would actually be implemented. So, it was kind of interesting to hear him even bring that up. But the fact that it's at the forefront of his mind means that, you know, he can't, he's not gonna be able to say that he's not aware of these issues and that he's not doing anything to try to solve it. So, I think that's a broader thing that we have to kind of work with our partners there to, and I know our city manager is very aware of those issues with your involvement on the various organizations and the liability trust fund, so I'm sure you will keep us in the loop as to any progress or developments on that.
Is he serving a four-year term or a two-year term?
Four.
Four?
Yeah. Did Gascon get re-elected?
There's a, it's a primary, right?
Yeah, it was just a primary. He didn't get over fifty percent of vote, but he's one of the top two.
So, November will decide it, I believe. Anyway, since you mentioned the state of the city, I just want to thank staff. Again, Liz and Eliana really did the hard work in terms of at least helping me directly with the presentation. Great job with the visuals, Red Eighty-Eight, all of our department heads, everyone who contributed. I mean, really, it's everything that we've done, from the ground level all the way up. So, I think I was trying to capture the essence that really it's a group effort to make this happen, and, you know, reflecting on a hundred years is a rare opportunity to kind of see how different it was from 1923 to now. And just because it's different doesn't mean it's a bad thing, it means we've made a lot of progress on things, and we're continuing to build towards that, as we can see from our earlier presentation today, from not just the financial side, but the capital project side, and so on and so forth. So, I want to thank my fellow council members, you were a key part of that leadership, because without the policy side of what we do, we cannot match that with what staff does. So, as I alluded to earlier, I felt this past year, a lot of things were in alignment, and that's why I had a lot to, I was able to cover a lot, because we certainly did achieve plenty, and more to come in the coming years. And then, Camellia Festival, amazing job, like it's already been said, I feel like it was one of the largest crowds we've seen in quite a while. So, congratulations to eighty years of great dedication and service for everyone involved in the committee, all the volunteers, the Royal Corps got their parade, so that was fantastic. And lastly, since Councilmember Viscara mentioned it, the Hawaiian delegation from Taiwan was an unexpected surprise, only because I didn't actually expect them to come. I think I told a lot of people, I thought with a lot of the, they had a presidential election earlier this year, so the odds of them coming, I thought, were very slim. And so, not only did they show up, they brought fifty people.
Was there anybody left in the city? Because it seemed like they brought like every department head was in the whole city.
Well, a lot of them were the students.
Well, no, well, maybe half, but a lot of department heads there.
They did, they did, and I think that's their style, because I think, what was touching for me was to hear from the magistrate that she made it a point that their first international visit post-COVID was to come to us.
Oh, nice.
So, that, to me, that shows that that meant a lot to them, for them to do it. They could have chosen any of their other connections, but...
Don't they have other sister cities?
They do, but apparently what the magistrate had shared with me is, we're really, I guess, we're the ones that actually respond to them and work with them, and have had a lot of meaningful kind of interaction going back to 2020, and I think they were particularly thankful of the aid we sent when they experienced the earthquake in their region back in 2022, and they likewise had helped us during COVID with some PPE. So, I think those kind of acts of kind of generosity and kindness was kind of symbolic of what they thought was meaningful. And so, one thing that maybe not a lot of people knew was, when they initially indicated that they were coming, I had asked them, I had talked to them a little bit about sort of the meaning and the history of the Camellia Festival, and that actually... of the meaning and the history of the Camellia Festival, and that actually changed the way they arranged the delegation, because they originally were not going to bring students.
They were what?
They were not going to bring students. They had intended it to be more of like a business trip. And then when I said, really, the Camellia Festival's main focus is on the youth and the future, that's when they kind of made the changes and arrangements. And I, and the reason why they didn't connect that was because the, a lot of the leadership has changed from the last time they came in 2022, in 2020. It was a different magistrate.
Was it her husband?
It was her husband.
Her husband.
Yeah, but even then, there's a lot of changes at their department heads. So really, there were only maybe a handful of people that, that came this year that also came back in 2020.
How long has their service magistrate?
They actually have an eight, eight-year, two-term limit.
Oh, wow.
I found her very impressive.
She's certainly...
Fun.
One of the most charismatic...
Very charismatic.
People I've, I've met.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, they, they brought kind of like the spirit of what, what Hualien County really represented and they, they brought it here.
And some very good whiskey, dude.
Yes, they, they brought a lot of things.
May not wanna go there.
Let's just say that our mayor was dancing and playing the piano.
So that, that part was kind of a, we were kind of planning for that, but then they kind of took over the program in terms of entertainment. So, yeah, and speaking of the piano, I do wanna also thank our own local piano store, German Piano City, for literally bringing that piano in at the last hour.
Oh, kidding?
Yeah, so I, I remember telling Brian that and then I sent Liz a text message and she didn't believe me. So she says, oh, this must be a joke. And then so I think Eliana and others were, didn't think that, they thought I was pulling their leg. And then when the movers actually came, they were just like, they're like, they couldn't...
Was it a good piano?
Yeah, it was a Steinway. They brought a Steinway, so it was a really good piano. But anyway, I also wanna thank the Historical Society for opening up the museum for them. I think they were very touched by the fact that the museum had a spot for our, the Asian-American impact and contributions to Temple City's history. And there were pieces of Hualien's gift from their 2020 visit that was on display. And so the magistrate was able to see that. She also learned a little bit about the history of Temple City and learned why we're called Temple City, not, we're, we don't have a lot of temples, you know? So it was very educational for, for her to be able to see that. I wanna thank our fire station, Captain Ortiz and his crew for also showing them around and discussing, because they brought their fire chief from Hualien County, so they had a good kind of exchange of how they operate and how, how we operate here. So I wanna thank them. I wanna thank Ms. Jing Lee in the back for leading the library tour. They were also very impressed with how our library is run. And I think the fact that Ms. Lee also speaks Mandarin did facilitate some of that communication and the questions back and forth, so I wanna thank you for, for being able to do that. In fact, she, they were so impressed with the way Jing and the library run some of their programs that they were jotting down notes and saying, okay, we're gonna copy this, we're gonna bring this back. Oh, this is a great idea to kind of spur more engagement and participation in their local libraries. So that was really great to see. And another thing that was unexpected was, you know how every Friday we have the, the dance group that, that practices in the pavilion? So little did I know that many of their members were from Hualien, Taiwan, so it was kind of coincidental, they arrived at the same time they were practicing and that was kind of, again, not planned, organic and nice to kind of see them kind of discussing and meeting each other. I think I'm running out of people to thank. I'm sure I'm missing some people. Last but not least, I wanna thank council for attending the dinner reception. I think the magistrate certainly was very, felt very welcomed and impressed with, with Temple City and the way we run things, although they don't run their government through a council type of leadership. There is, they're more of a, I guess I'll just call it like a single strong mayor. It's an elected person, but they, it's a very top-down pyramid scheme kind of a way of...
Is that different than the magistrate?
Well, the magistrate, she's the top dog, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
But was there a mayor also or is it just...
There, there is a city mayor, but then the, that city is actually within the county and they're actually much smaller. So in terms of the hierarchy, she still outranks that mayor. So that's a, that's a wrap for, for February. And I wanna thank everyone for their, their support in helping me survive this. I didn't, I did enjoy every moment of it, even though it was very taxing and tiring. But it was, reflecting back, I was worth every, every minute, so thank you. All right, we'll move on to the last item, which is additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Any final public comments for tonight? All right, seeing none, then we are adjourned. Good night.